All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pleasure to welcome you all here to our council chamber. My name is Mike Little. I'm the mayor for the district of North Vancouver. And so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to the public hearing for 10:31 to 10:45, Ridgewood Drive, taking place Tuesday, November 7th at seven o'clock at District Hall. A public hearing is a quasi judicial setting where it's set down by rules from the provincial government. And so I have a bit of a script to read to help keep us on target and within those parameters. And so if you'll indulge, I'm gonna start to read and go through the script to lay down the order of events for the evening. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act and is being held in a hybrid meeting format, meaning there is a combination of in-person and electronic participation by some or all members of council, staff, and the public. In person here, we have four members of the council and then joining us virtually, you can see councillors Pope and back, but councillor Forbes is also on. We're gonna get councillor Forbes spotlighted as well. And so in that, all seven members of the council are participating directly with the meeting tonight. The chair has established the following rules for this hearing. Following the staff presentation, we will go through the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the chair may call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address council for a first time. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaws under consideration this evening. If you've provided a written submission, there's no need to read it, as it will have already been seen by council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaws under consideration at the hearing. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Council wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes about public hearings. Council is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaws. Council may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaws which council has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available on the table next to the door and online at dnv.org/agenda. Everyone at this hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff which may or may not require an extension of the hearing, or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So at this point, I'll call on the clerk to introduce the bylaws for consideration this evening.
Thank you. Through your worship, District of North Vancouver Official Community Plan Bylaw 79002011, Amendment Bylaw 86282023, Amendment 49. Bylaw 8628 proposes to amend the OCP land use designation of the subject site from residential level two, detached residential RES2, to residential level four, transition multifamily RES4. And District of North Vancouver Rezoning Bylaw 1427, Bylaw 8629. Bylaw 8629 proposes to amend the district zoning bylaw by rezoning the site from single-family residential Edgemont Zone, RSE, to comprehensive development zone 145, CD145. The CD145 zone addresses permitted and accessory uses and conditions of use and zoning provisions such as density, amenities, setbacks, height and building and site coverage, landscaping, and parking requirements.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna go to the staff presentation. And we have, Emile Norden is going to be giving that. Emile, you have 15 minutes to make your presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship, members of council and members of the public. My name is Emile Norden and I'm a development planner with the district. Tonight's public hearing is for the four properties from 10:31 to 10:45, Ridgewood Drive. The proposal before you is for an increase in residential units from the existing zoning, which allows for four single-family homes with suites, to 32 owned townhomes. Sorry. My presentation includes 12 slides and is about 10 minutes in length. So associated with this proposal are two bylaws with the subject of this public hearing. First, Bylaw 8628 amends the site's OCP designation from existing residential level two to residential level four, as was noted. It will also designate the site in development permit areas for form and character and energy, water conservation, and greenhouse emission reduction. Bylaw 8629 will rezone the site from single-family residential Edgemont Zone, RSE, to comprehensive development zone 145, CD145. So the site highlighted by the red rectangle here on the slide is situated at the northeast corner of the Edgemont Village Centre and at the intersection of Ridgewood Drive and Air Avenue. It's just under 40,000 square feet in size and consists of four lots. As you can see from this image, surrounding land uses include single-family to the north, a single-family to the east that is identified for low-density, ground-oriented, multifamily housing. There's a connoisseur thrifties mixed-use development to the west across Air Avenue, and Amica seniors living to the south there. The project is being reviewed against and is compliant with key policy documents from the district. It addresses OCP goals such as transitioning development from higher density within the village core to surrounding single-family and providing a range of units suitable for families. It's aligned with the OCP Review Action Plan, which calls for low-carbon, compact, and diverse housing close to town and village centers. And it responds to the Housing Needs Report, which identifies a need for family-oriented two- and three-bedroom units. The report also acknowledges the need for additional homeownership options that provide an alternative to single-family homes for missing middle households such as families and downsizers, which this project would deliver. It also aligns with the province's housing target order, which identifies a need for two- and three-bedroom units and homeownership units as well. The proposal is also consistent with the Edgemont Village Centre Plan, as I'll cover on the following slide here. So it's mentioned the existing OCP designation is residential level two, as you can see, the site is outlined in red. The Edgemont Village Centre Plan, which was adopted after the OCP in 2014, following consultation with the community, identifies the site for townhouses up to three stories in height and with a density between 1 and 1.2 FSR. This proposal for 32 three-story townhouses at a density of approximately 1.18 FSR and three stories in height would comply with what was envisioned in the Edgemont Village Plan. Turning to the site details, here we have the ground floor plan of the proposed development. The project includes five three-story buildings with a total of 32 owned townhomes. Access to the underground parking is indicated by the blue arrow at the bottom-left corner, that's at the southwest corner of the site, provides access from Air Avenue. A shared garbage staging and loading and delivery space for drop-ups, pickups, pickups and deliveries is located there beside the driveway off Air Avenue to alleviate stoppages on the street frontages. The townhome entries are provided either from the street or the central walkway, and parkade access is provided by elevator or stairs to the central walkway. An accessible path is provided from Ridgewood Drive and another pedestrian connection is provided from Air Avenue, as indicated by those dark blue arrows. The site slopes down actually from the northeast to the southwest corner, which is allowed Building 3 there in the top-right corner, the northeast corner of the site, to step down the slope. And it has a mix of smaller two-bedroom units. So on Ridgewood Drive, there are eight two-story units that have direct entry there from Ridgewood. And then in the lower courtyard, there are four enhanced accessible units. These are one-story units that have two bedrooms, though with that great access from the courtyard. Then there's also a shared outdoor amenity area at the southwest corner of the site. And a public seating area in the northwest corner, which will be secured with the right-of-way. And as you can see, all the units have access to private outdoor space as well. So they either have patios, balconies, or the four stacked units. Access from Ridgewood Drive and Building 3 have roof decks as well. So in terms of the unit mix, the proposal is for 32 units in a mix of two- and three-bedroom layouts. And these units range in size from about 900 square feet to 1500 square feet. And they're considered suitable to accommodate families and seniors looking to downsize in the community. As mentioned earlier, this presentation, this project will deliver needed housing for these types of households, as is identified in the district's Housing Needs Report. As noted, the project includes four enhanced accessible units, which exceeds the requirements of the district's accessible design policy. And the remaining units also include basic accessible features. The enhanced units will include design features intended to accommodate folks in wheelchairs with limited mobility. So features include things like wider entries and level areas at the entrances, turning radiuses. You can see they're highlighted in the kitchen, the circle there in the top-right corner. So it's wider turning radiuses in the kitchen. Also, in one of the bathrooms is accessible space under the sink for wheelchairs to pull up, increased space beside the bed in one of the bedrooms. And there's also more accessible handles on the cabinets, adjustable shelving and countertops in the kitchen, and more easily accessible outlets and light switches and windows. So it makes it more easily utilized by people with accessibility issues. So moving on to bicycle and vehicle parking. The project's bicycle parking includes a total of 83 spaces for residents and visitors. That works out to about 2.5 spaces per unit. And the bicycle parking provision does go above and beyond what is identified in the zoning bylaw and the district's bicycle parking policy. In terms of vehicle parking, the proposal includes a total of 64 residential parking spaces for residents, and eight of those are for visitors, the overall parking rate of two spaces per unit. And that complies with the zoning bylaw. And as mentioned, there's also an additional loading and staging space beside the driveway at street level. In terms of project sustainability, the proposed development will be designed to passive house standard, which is the most highly regarded, energy-efficient, and climate-resilient building design standard at the moment. A passive house succeeds step four of the Part III step code and meets the BC Energy Code target of net-zero energy-ready. The project will also be entirely fossil fuel-free with hot water and space heating and cooling provided by electric heat pump systems. And the proposal includes level-two EV charging for all residential parking spaces and level-one EV charging for bicycle storage spaces as well. This slide indicates the project's in-kind and cash contributions. First of all, the project will be contributing approximately $1.7 million in off-site upgrades. And this includes road and sidewalk improvements and future separated bike lanes along both Ridgewood and Air in accordance with the district's active transportation plans. The project will also provide street tree planting, street lighting, and water and sanitary storm infrastructure upgrades in the area. In order to accommodate the street and sidewalk upgrades, the project will be contributing road dedication of about 40 square meters along Air. You can see indicated by the blue and also at the corner to improve sightlines at that intersection. The community amenity contribution is just over $770,000 based on the provisions of the community amenity contribution policy. And this will be secured in CD145. And it's anticipated that this contribution could go towards the Affordable Housing Fund, park-and-trail improvements, public carts, or other public realm infrastructure improvements at council's discretion. In addition, district Metro Vancouver and TransLink DCCs will be calculated at the applicable rate at the time of building permit. And the district DCCs are currently estimated at about 420,000 at the 2023 rate. I could probably pull that up. I don't have it on, Mary, now. A virtual public information meeting for the project was held from March 30th to April 18th of last year. Signs were installed on the site, ads were displayed in the North Shore News, and approximately 200 notices were delivered in the neighborhood. There were about 142 visitors, unique visitors to the webpage, and we received 20 written responses either through the PIM page or by email. And notices for this evening's public hearing were delivered in the same manner as the public information meeting, with the signs and advertisements and notices went out to the same neighbors. And as of about 4:30 this afternoon, we'd received about 25 written submissions to the public hearing notice. And we also received input leading up to bylaw introductions, so in all, about 65 written responses were received. I'd say generally, a lot of the feedback has really been supportive of the smaller family-oriented units close to the village and the sustainable design and accessibility features. There've also been some comments related to traffic, construction, and the proposed driveway location on Air Avenue. And so in response to that, just have a couple of comments. The traffic analysis done for the proposal indicates minimal additional vehicle traffic to be generated from the site and minimal impacts on adjacent streets and intersections. And the proposed driveway was selected, identified to be the preferred location, the southwest corner of the site on Air Avenue. It is the lower-volume road as compared to Ridgewood. It's set as relatively flat portion of the site, and it's anticipated to have minimal impacts on adjacent uses. Ridgewood has the walking route to Highland Elementary School. So this location would avoid that. And lastly, a final approved construction plan will be required prior to building permit. And the construction management plan for the project will be closely monitored throughout construction of the site to ensure impacts to neighbors and adjacent streets and uses are mitigated and to ensure safe pedestrian routes to Highland Elementary are maintained throughout. And a copy of all written input received from the PIM through bylaw introduction to public hearing are included in the public hearing binder. Sorry, missed my animations. There we go. So in conclusion, the proposal tonight presents an opportunity for low-carbon, compact, and accessible housing options in a village centre in accordance with district policy. Currently, the property allows for four single-family homes with suites. And the proposal under consideration would provide 32 townhomes in a mix of sizes suitable for families and downsizers. That concludes my presentation. The applicant team also has a presentation, and staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Could you just point out, sorry?
Yeah. Sorry, bear with me. Okay. So there, the blue arrow. Yeah, so just north of the driveway is the loading area, the entrance to both.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point is an opportunity for the applicant to make a presentation of up to 15 minutes. So if we could have the applicant come up to the table, that would be great. And introduce yourselves, and when you're ready to go, you'll have 15 minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for taking the time to consider public input for a proposal at Ridgewood Drive today. My name is Dean Johnson, Vice President of Development at West Group Properties, and we're excited to hear from the community and you this evening regarding the project, which has been in the works for over six years. The proposal for you this evening has evolved through consultations with community members, district staff, and council. As a result, it fully aligns with the Edgemont Village Centre Plan and provides an important supply of housing for the community. Before we delve into the project, I'd like to provide you a brief introduction to West Group. We are a family-owned real estate development company based in the Lower Mainland. Primarily, we specialize in developing sustainable masterplan communities. With over 7,000 units and 10 communities completed to date, and another 1,300 homes currently under construction, we are fairly active in the general region. More recently, we've also worked closely with CMHC to receive construction financing to transition over 1,000 homes from condo residential to market residential. And those are currently under construction. Well, we have developed a number of communities. We are best known for the River District, South Vancouver, Brewery District, and New Westminster, and a little closer to home here in the district, the Prescott on Lonsdale, which obviously is in the city, but closer to the district. In our masterplans, we have successfully delivered homes similar to the proposal on Ridgewood. We take pride in our strong reputation for consistently delivering high-quality results. We have a great project team. I would like to quickly thank, in addition to some members from the West Group team here this evening. I'm joined by Re Select, our project architect from Integra Architecture, who you'll be hearing from shortly. Additionally, I'd like to thank JMB Consulting, our sustainability and passive house consultant, and Bung and Associates, our transportation and traffic engineers. As discussed in the first reading, this project has last viewed by council in 2018. Since then, we've strived to align it with the Edgemont Village Centre, input Village Centre Plan, community feedback, and the market needs. Well, this can be challenging. We believe our proposal has met the goals and has improved on a number of fronts. Since early 2022, we've been working with staff to evolve and refine this concept with visits to various panels and input from the community. And just want to note, on a general level, in challenging economic conditions characterized by high interest rates and softing market, maintaining efficient project timelines becomes really imperative for us. Collecting, collective timeliness is crucial to ensuring that projects can proceed and we can deliver housing when it's most needed. We call upon our councils and our cities to work collaboratively, recognizing the significant impact of their decisions on what we can provide to our community. Unfortunately, with ever-increasing reality, there's delays, and those can compromise our ability to deliver public benefits and the project, if at all. And we appreciate staff's work on this project and getting to this point, and look forward to continued opportunities to work together and build the community. Through this work, core elements of our proposal began to emerge. We involved the concept. Overall, unit count has obviously decreased, as Emile just mentioned. Sorry, increases just mentioned, providing more homes for families and at the same time, reducing the home size to make them more attainable for a broader segment of the community. Considering the high price of the average single-family home in the area, expanding this housing segment caters to the needs of a significant portion of the population. This development provides opportunities for North Vancouver residents to raise their families in a fantastic location near an elementary school, while at the same time, offering the option for downsizing in the community they love. Construction activity in Edgemont is a key concern in the community. While the project has minimal impact long-term on the service levels of the roads and intersections, we developed a construction management plan to minimize impacts during construction wherever possible. This plan considers trades parkings at St. Catherine's Church and deliveries on air, keeping the majority of construction deliveries and activities off Ridgewood, given its role as a vehicular route and access to Highlands Elementary. And working collaboratively with our traffic engineer, Bung and Associates, city staff, and the community, we believe this plan provides the least impactful construction program for the site. Once work commences, the development timeline would be broken into these components up on the screen here. So obviously, some demolition and clearing, excavation, and shoring, and then the majority of the rest of the harder construction works. And overall, we are looking for approximately 18 months of activity on the site. I will now pass the torch to Reece from Integra, and who will offer some more comprehensive explanation of the concept. I just want to thank everybody for their time this evening.
Thanks very much. Good evening, Mayor and council, and members of the public. My name is Reece Leach. I'm a principal at Integra Architecture. So just following Emile's fantastic presentation, very thorough, I will try to keep mine as brief and not duplicate any information. So as Emile noted, the project is proposed at 1.1 FSR, 1.18, three stories, 32 market townhomes. Hundred percent of those are two and three beds with four of those enhanced accessible units where meeting and exceeding parking and bike requirements on the site. So as noticed, as noted by Dean, we have extensively engaged the community. We tried to listen and collaborate with members of staff, community groups, neighbors, and local businesses. And we met with the school and other community groups, and we tried to understand the challenges of the previous project that had been brought forward by another developer and architect and respond to those. So we addressed, hopefully, we've addressed the main concern around attainable housing. We've done that by obviously increasing the number of family-oriented homes from 25 to 32, and also changing the unit mix to ensure we're featuring two- and three-bedroom options. We're also adopting 100% passive house design, which I'll go into a little bit later on, which meets and exceeds the typical step code for. We're also meeting the BC Energy Step Code for net-zero energy-ready targets. As noted, the project is fully electric, so we're entirely relying upon electricity for our heating, cooling, and cooking, so no natural gases. We're also very concerned and conservative about our water consumption. And so our landscape plans are designed to reduce water consumption through the use of automated drip irrigation, but also native plant species to reduce water consumption. And Emile noted very clearly that we're meeting all the requirements of the OCP. And I think what's worth noting on this slide, and what I'll talk about a little bit, is the part of the project that we're really focused on was also transitioning to our adjacencies. So we are a transitional site. We're moving from the three-story volumes and forms of the projects to our west and moving towards a two-and-a-half-story volume to our east. And so I think that was one of the key components of our site. So a little bit on passive house, as you may or may not know, passive house is a very, very stringent energy efficiency targets, which reduces basically the building's ecological footprint. It does that through five main ways. So increased thermal insulation, very energy-efficient windows, ventilation through heat recovery systems, a very, very stringent and tight air tightness target, and a thermal bridge-free design. The next slide will kind of give you a little bit about that. So here's a typical three-floor plans for a townhome with a cross-section of one of the townhomes. And that kind of highlights the location of these five elements. So very highly insulated building envelopes. We actually have eight inches of semi-rigid exterior insulation plus our interior insulation for the typical stud cavity. So it lands with a very large and very deep wall assembly. But it's like wearing a lovely wool sweater. It'll keep you warm and cozy all winter long. The other components are obviously high-energy efficient windows, which actually they're now local producers in Canada for these windows, which is fantastic. We've also got the heat recovery system, which ensures that the indoor air quality is top-notch all year round. So great for those smoky summer days as well as the cold winter nights. We've got a very tight air tightness target, so a typical step code project, you know, is quite stringent. This would be at least double, if not more, for passive house targets of, you know, 0.4 changes per hour. We're also thermal bridge-free design, so ensuring that we're not bringing that cool air or cool energy in through the building envelope. So the site plan, as you kind of already have a look at, the five main buildings, Orientated Ridgewood and Air. Most of the access to the site is located at the southwest corner. And we do have pedestrian accesses off the north on Ridgewood as well, and on the far northeast corner of the site. Building 3 is the building that basically utilizes kind of a slightly stacked form, where we had the single orientation units facing the courtyard. I think worth noting on this slide too, is some of the landscape elements on the site. So we obviously have a significant street tree upgrade and boulevard improvements. But it's worth noting that we're actually replacing the 25 trees on site with 47 trees. Of those 25 that are being replaced, there's a significant number that don't meet the city's requirement or the district's requirement for tree retention, and some are also identified in poor health, so it's worth noting that. But we're almost a two-for-one replacement ratio, even with those numbers. So the site elevations, I think what I was referring to about as a transitional site, is something we've really worked quite hard with staff and our clients to ensure that the site transitions from a really a three-story frontage on our western boundary, facing the adjacent developments. And as the site progresses from west to east, it utilizes kind of a different volume and form to step down to a majority of the two-story volume with rooftop access, so really a small third floor up there. And that helps us transition to what would be the potential development of the project or of the sites to our east, at two-and-a-half stories for ground-oriented. Material board, so we're, you know, keen on providing and ensuring that we're highly utilizing high-quality materials in the project. So we're using a standing seam metal roof that actually transitions into a wall facade there on that main corner. We're using cementitious cladding and brick to bring in some warmth and some interest into the facade. Using a textural change as well as vertical and horizontal siding. Obviously, big windows are kind of a key element to any kind of contemporary west coast design. But that obviously also needs to be balanced with the requirements of passive house and ensuring we don't actually overheat a project. So ensuring well-placed windows that are livable and usable and in the right spot. So this is one of the renderings, obviously, you've been seeing a few times tonight. So this is the corner of Ridgewood and Air Street. You can see this is building one with the stepped entries. You can also see the offsite. You can also see the the offsite, also the onsite small seating area as part of the kind of community note that's a statue right away. And you can see the entries as we move up. There's also kind of the mailbox is just tucked in there around the back of building one. The next image shows you the transition from the three stories to really the two and a half story volume as it moves to the east. We've got a real textural play of brick here on the facade kind of bringing some interest in keeping that warmth. We really worked very diligently to try and ensure that this building form retained the same design language as the other parts of this project, so the other buildings, and and we hope we think that we've been able to do that successfully. This is just looking back down Ridgewood there. It's more to the west. And this is the last shot, which is showing you inside the courtyard. So we have access to all units from the courtyard. Obviously, as Emile noted, we have elevator access up from the parkade. So we want to make sure that the courtyard and the mani spaces were fully accessible. And so all units actually have the, this building, for example, on the right here has front doors on Ridgewood, but also has access from the courtyard as well to try and improve the accessibility of all homes, not just those that are the enhanced accessible. And obviously, at the left of the image there, you can see the front doors for the buildings facing the Amica Senior Living building. And with that, I think I'll wrap it up and thank you very much for your presentation, for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the public input for this evening. So have the applicants take their seats. So in advance of the meeting, we did open up a speaker's list, which was managed by the clerks department. And on that list, I have 14 speakers who have signed up to speak. At the end of that time, I'm going to create an opportunity for anybody else who would like to speak. If you're here in the audience, just raise your hand at that point. If you're joining us virtually, raise your virtual hand if you are a caller, because we do also have the ability for people to call in. Then I believe it's star nine to raise your hand on the phone in system and star six to unmute yourself. At that time, we'll we'll fire that back up on the screen to make sure that people have a direction on how to how to work that system. So at this point, I have the first speaker, which I believe is Ogie Radojic, followed by Tim Orr.
Ogie Radojic?
Yes.
I'm here, your worship.
Virtually. Welcome. I can hear you clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, great. Well, hello, Mayor Little and councillors. My name is Ogie Radojic, and I'm an owner and operator of Buffalo located in Edgemont Village. You may recall, I also tuned into your council meeting in October and was proud to be a voice for local businesses in the community. I'm back to reiterate my support for West Group's townhouse proposal on Ridgewood Drive. As I shared with you a few weeks ago, I was quite involved in the opening of Buffalo Edgemont. I continue to spend lots of time in this amazing community and have really enjoyed getting to know our staff who generally grew up in and around Edgemont Village. As do most of our patrons. This project, I believe, will provide, you know, more density and new family oriented townhomes. I think that's something that really businesses like ourselves, I think I mentioned last time, I really hope they're pizza fans when they move in. But I think beyond just us, more density is really good for the growth of the neighborhood. As I'm sure you can appreciate, we're all looking for new housing and Edgemont Village is no different, and it will just help to contribute to the betterment of the broader business community, is what I would say. I've also recently been asked to join DN V Business Task Force with other leaders from various industries. You know, one of the things that we're really looking to expand on is kind of what growth opportunities there exist within the district for across various industries. So it's not just restaurants. It's not just hospitality, but really what we can do to kind of continue to foster a sense of community while while growing. So I really think projects like this are are key to that because it really comes from having people in neighborhoods who who can live and work in the neighborhood. So I'm not going to take up too much of your time. So I just want to thank you once again for the opportunity to participate in the public consulting process and being a voice for communities and Edgemont Village. So I would, again, just one more time, like to reiterate my support and encourage council to support this application as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ogie Radojic. The next speaker I have is Tim Orr, followed by Kimberly Jones, Kimberly Paige Jones. There we go. Tim Orr is joining us virtually.
Making sure you guys can hear me.
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Excellent. Thank you. Hi, Mayor Little and council. Appreciate the time for letting me speak tonight. I'm in huge support of this project. It's something that this community needs desperately for diversity of, you know, market housing and the efforts to move into this community that is pretty sought after. Amazing schools, amazing amenities. My family and I were lucky enough to move in. We're a family of five now. And, you know, we tried probably for three and a half years to move to Northland and specifically this area. We targeted it. We have family and friends that live in this area, and there's always been an issue of, you know, the diversity of housing. There's never been really townhomes. It was before the BOFO did their project and Grosvenor did the thrifties project. And there was really no options. So I think it's huge. I think the number one issue that we see a lot is downsizers in our community and even, you know, my neighbors. I live on Sunset, a close walk away, and my kids went to school preschool at St. Catherine's and now go to Cleveland. And it's just something that the city, that municipality needs and the community needs is the options of housing, and it's been long overdue. I think the district has gone far too slow in Northland, and we need to create some housing. And again, like I say, huge support for this project, and I hope it goes through. Thank you for your time.
Like your comments, Tim Orr. Next speaker I have is Kimberly Jones. A virtual or in the room? Do we have a name that? Can we just check? There is a phone in contact and we don't have a name associated with it if.
Can you hear me there?
There, I can hear you. Is this Kimberly?
It is, yes.
Okay, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Perfect. Thank you. Hi there. I'm Kimberly Jones. Hi, Mary Little and the members of council. I tuned in tonight just to offer my support for the proposed townhome development at Ridgewood and Air. I'm very happy with the current proposal, and I would love to see it move forward. My family and I do live in Edgemont Village. I'm just actually not far from the property being contemplated for future development. And when considering moving over to Edgemont, we wanted a vibrant, family oriented neighborhood, which just led us right right there. We often use all the amenities that Edgemont has to offer. We use Dudley Park, crave culture. We go to Buffalo. And we think some enemies should be shared with other families that are very much in much in favor of adding new housing developments in Edgemont, which will help keep our community safe, walkable, and vibrant. The local shop owners in Edgemont also stand to benefit from increased residential density in the village. I'm sure the new residents of these homes will be regular customers at the businesses that my family loves to frequent, and all of which deserve much more support. And we have three children, all of which attend Highlands Elementary School. So I do see how much traffic this school does create. But I can say that this project would deliver much living, much needed family housing, but without gaining a lot of traffic. It's really close to 50s Highlands and all of the aforementioned shops in the village. So, um, yeah, I think more housing diversity in our area would be wonderful. With updates on the current houses existing there, and it would fit in perfectly with our community. So, yeah, I just wanted to read my support for this project moving forward. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Kimberly Jones. The next speaker I have is Brian Platts, joining us virtually.
Oh, you worship.
Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. My name is Brian Platts, and I live at 3187 Beverly Crescent. In fact, my own entire life. So I've seen a lot of changes in Edgemont Village over the past 50 some odd years, not to date myself. Obviously, as a neighbor of the subject property, I'm once again speaking in favor of West Group Properties' proposed 32 unit townhome project on Ridgewood Drive. As you know, the subject site has long been considered for multifamily development and is identified in the Edgemont Village Plan and Design Guidelines for townhouses up to three stories in height with a modest density of 1.2 floor space ratio. And as I noted previously, when I spoke at first reading, West Group's project not only fully complies with the Edgemont Village Plan, it also meets a number of key planning objectives, such as providing a variety of unit sizes, including four fully accessible units suitable for people with disabilities or local seniors looking to downsize adjacent to Edgemont Village, achieving the passive house design environmental standard, the inclusion of extensive bicycle parking and repair station, adding greater diversity to the housing stock around the village and providing relative affordability. Public benefits of the project include various road improvements, such as new sidewalks, street trees, gutter and curb letdowns, improved street, improved street lighting around the site, accommodation of a bike lane on Ridgewood, and almost 800,000 in community amenity contributions. With respect to the design of the project, West Group's architectural team has skillfully designed an attractive project that will be a credit to the community. The architectural team should be congratulated. This is a good project that will provide families with lower priced housing alternative compared to new single family homes and worthy of your full support. In closing, this should be an easy development application for council to approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Brian Platts. Next speaker I have is Deborah Morris, followed by Adrian Chaster. And Deborah is joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address it here.
Great. Thanks very much, Mayor Little and council. I am VP of Conant Edgemont Village Residential Section. And I, I'm not representing our council, but I, I'm, we do have, we have talked about this a lot, but so do, we do share many of the issues that I'm going to chat about. And I am in full support of the development. But that said, but I'm not, I don't necessarily agree with the construction plan, having the driveway off of Air Avenue. And I don't know how much time is being sent there watching what goes on on that tiny section of air between the parcade that has 370 or 317 parking stalls and the loading bay for all of those businesses that are in the Conant Edgemont Village. And it's, it's already extremely busy when thrifties are having deliveries and all the other businesses. The trucks, the semi trailers, 18 really, or semi trailers have to back out to deliver their product, and they take out the entire section of air. And so, so I feel that that section of air is treated like a side street as it is right now. There's no parking. There's no stopping. But all deliveries, you know, they can't get onto delivery schedule because of traffic and loading and accidents. So you end up having, you know, sometimes four or five trucks on that section of air or going down Woodbine in front of Amica Edgemont. Islanding. It's just going to be extremely busy and extremely difficult when you're when you're excavating the site. You know, once it's done, I can see that, but I'm, you know, you talk about just having the construction plan off of Ridgewood, because air is easier. But it's, we need to know what the short and long term plan will be for that section of air. Yeah, and I think, I think that about, you know, and then on top of it, there's the Capilano Suspension Bridge overflow. Everyone parks down in in that parcade there. So there's a lot of pedestrians. There's a lot of cars. When the deliveries are being made, pedestrians have to wait. The cars have to wait. And this is happening already, well before any construction will begin. So I hope that there can be some advancement in that area and maybe some changes made or some thought put toward what will happen with that. Um. Yeah, and I think that's probably, that's probably my biggest concern and our biggest concern. Because we do hear from the residents often about the islanding, the noise, having to wait, pedestrians walking up the ramp. Yeah, it's already extremely busy. So thank you very much.
Right. Thank you very much, Deborah Morris. Next speaker I have is Adrian Chaster, followed by Judith Brooke. Adrian Chaster, are you joining us virtually today?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Okay, I can't see myself. So if you're lucky, you can't see me either. My name is Adrian Chaster, and I live at 3044 Crescent View Drive, just off Edgemont Village. And you'll be happy to hear that I hacked a fair bit of out of what I was going to say, so it doesn't get too repetitive. Before starting, I'd like to thank each of you for serving on council. You put in countless hours dealing with issues which are often contentious, but you always try to do what you think is best for the community, and for that, I thank you. I chaired the working group, which drafted the Edgemont Village Center Plan and Design Guidelines adopted by council almost 10 years ago. And I've been asked by two other former members of the working group, Greg Cameron and Peter Thompson, to say that I speak this evening on their behalf as well as for myself. We support the proposed Ridgewood development. And I won't cite the parts of the official community plan or the Edgemont Village Plan, which show, which show that this is within them, just as you've heard already, and I agree. It complies completely with both of those plans. And also, as you've seen on page 19 of the village plan, the four lots were already designated for townhouses. As to the existing neighborhood character, which the village plan talks about, this 32 unit development on Ridgewood Drive, which is an arterial route, would back on the senior living development, which is something in the order of 115 or 120 units on Highland Boulevard, also an arterial route. And Ridgewood also has then the BOFO on the other side of Edgemont, and then the Conant Place, the thrifties building there. So the whole, that whole strip is, and also then on the east side of of this development will be more is more higher density development down the road. Also, this thing, this whole project would meet the provincial government's focus on increasing the availability of multifamily housing. The Ridgewood dwellings will not be cheap. I'm told that the proposed development is just not large enough to have below market units and still be economically viable. But the units will not be as prohibitively expensive as the single family dwellings around here are for young professionals and firefighters and service providers and all the others that our community needs. As well, they'll provide opportunities for aging downsizers who've spent their adult lives here, but neither need nor can any longer afford the homes where they raise their families. All these residents will add to the vitality of the village and the success of its merchants. The construction fatigue from the contemporaneous BOFO and Grosvenor projects, which influenced council to turn down the very similar BOFO two proposal for this same site in 2018, is passed. And the village is now the better for those two developments, with the new thrifties supermarket, a couple of restaurants, several other businesses, and many more residents to support village merchants. They've injected new life into the village. As for the potential disruption, which might be caused by the construction of the Ridgewood project, I point to the recently completed 22 unit townhouse project at the end of my street, Crescent View Drive, where it intersects with Conant Crescent. It is only a block off the village core, yet because construction access was not via Edgemont Boulevard, village life was largely unaffected. The same is likely to be the case with the Ridgewood development. And so I respectfully ask that council allows this project to proceed to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Adrian Chaster. The next speaker I have is Judith Brooke, followed by Arzu Babal. And Judith Brooke is joining us virtually. Welcome. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mayor Little. Can you hear me?
Clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council, for giving me this chance to chat briefly about the project. My name is Judith Brooke. I live in Lynn Valley, and I'm frequently in the Edgemont area. Now, while the North Shore needs more rental units, and this is an ownership project, I am speaking in strong support of this project. Having this mix of townhome sizes will help folks who are entering the housing market or downsizing, as we've heard. The configuration, I think, is is very flexible and and going to be great for the folks looking for a place with the two bedrooms and three bedrooms. I really appreciate the design built in here with. I really appreciate the design built in here with the four one level enhanced accessible suites and all the thought that went into that. I think that's really important for folks as uh we've heard with, with wheelchairs and uh seniors who might be uh, uh, you know, compromised with their mobility. I'd like to emphasize the point about pedestrian safety from the district staff report that specifically mentioned Callwood Drive is not to be used as a truck route due to the school location. And the C M T P, the Construction Management Traffic Plan, um, I believe will be reviewed. I really appreciate the passive house approach. It's great for the climate and for the building's residents. This passive house standard, um, I believe is on target to be six times lower than the new proposed uh greenhouse gas intensity emissions targets outlined by the district's uh Community Energy and Emissions Plan. And it's fantastic that there will not be any natural gas on this project and that it's entirely electric. This deals with operational G H G emissions. Um, materials will be used that have good longevity as well as B C timber to reduce embodied emissions. And this deals with construction emissions, which are just as important as operational. Uh, the domestic hot water, as we know, it's also being uh produced electrically. So this, this is fantastic. And all the windows are passive house certified. And um, it's, it's really great that we're having more of these projects uh come, come into fruition that are not contributing to our emissions because uh, as we know, we have to get them lowered. Um, most folks here have heard about uh unbuilders for dealing with deconstruction of any existing buildings. And West Group has used unbuilders in the past and uh hopefully are still considering them for, for uh use on this, this project if needed. Um, the very small air changes we heard during the presentation of zero point four uh is obviously going to make for a very healthy indoor living environment for the residents. There's planned use of wood framing and mineral wool insulation for lower carbon during building, which is also very key and uh needed for uh, for our climate. And um also planned use of low global warming potential refrigerants for the uh, the heat pump and the uh, the uh, uh air changes is, is uh important. I appreciate having the um internal courtyard and public seating area because this helps both the residents and the public enjoy the outdoor area. Uh, I appreciate the stacking of the buildings to be similar heights and merging with the site's elevation with a step down approach. I think it, it's making very good use of the space. Um, I want to give a, a shout out here about West Group's unique approach where current renters of West Group buildings can accumulate credits towards a lower purchase rate of a West Group developed owned homes. So most of these rental spots, um, I believe are in the River District, Burnaby, New West and elsewhere, not much in North Van other than commercial retail on Lonsdale, but it's still a help up for Metro Vancouver renters of West Group uh places to move into West Group home ownership. So that's uh what I'm saying. I'm, I'm uh very excited about this project and I hope that you um give it a thumbs up because uh passive house build and this, this approach here of, of the uh different uh unit sizes, the accessibility and uh the location of it, I, I think it's a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
I thank you for your comments, Judith Brooke. Uh, the next speaker is Arzu Babal, followed by Casey Pollard. And uh, I believe Arzu is joining us virtually. Arzu, can you hear me? Uh, there you go, you're.
Oh, hi. Okay. Hi, can you see me? Can you hear me?
I can see and hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council and staff, members of the North Vancouver community, good evening. Uh, my name is Arzu Babu and I've been part of the Edgemont community since two thousand and eleven. For the record, I've spent many years on the executive of the Edgemont and Upper Capilano Community Association. I was also involved with the original Edgemont Village Centre Plan, around which this and other developments have been recently based. Since the village centre plan was first formalized, public input has been further incorporated into the much larger and comprehensive O C P as well. Since then, communities and developers are eagerly awaiting more details on provincial plans to introduce missing middle housing to all communities in B C with much reduced formality. Therefore, my first point, this very project application was closed at the fourth reading for apparently no other reason than on the grounds that there were too many construction projects on the go at the same time. Rather than agree on delaying construction, I understand that the whole project was rejected, making the applicant go through the whole process all over again. Whilst I may not be fully conversant with the way council runs, I do know that it costs a lot of taxpayer money to process such applications and ties up many municipal departments, creating a backlog for the relatively smaller projects. Going forward, I personally see a little benefit in consuming taxpayer resources debating if multifamily homes can or cannot be built. I believe that the time for that has come and gone. Gentle density is coming. Let's make sure it works for everyone. Two, in my opinion, we should focus our tax dollars on supporting the planning department and, and in ensuring that all new homes are built to high standards, that they are aesthetically pleasing, that quality public realm, realm improvements are part of the package and that parking and transit needs are thoroughly researched, allowing people to come in and out of the village as conveniently as possible. Three, cradle to grave. Village vitality can only be sustainable in the long run by having all age groups living in close proximity. This is only realistic by having a variety of housing options. Four, it's great to see so many small businesses in Edgemont. Edgemont businesses need a certain critical mass of residents to remain sustainable in the long run. These businesses are usually run by local residents who do try and employ other local residents. So let's try and keep those Edgemont dollars local. In conclusion, I want to acknowledge all those who have, over the decades, participated in making Edgemont Village a landmark destination on the North Shore. I think that West Group fully understands its obligation to leave behind a project that will be admired for decades to come. And I fully support its application on Ridgewood Avenue uh Drive. That concludes my submission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Arzu Babal. Uh, the next speaker I have is Casey Pollard, followed by Jack Alpress. Casey Pollard joining us virtually.
Let's see, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. Welcome. Uh, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Little and councillors. Uh, my name is Casey Pollard and I live in Edgemont Village, uh, very close to the project being discussed, actually. Uh, I, I'm right at the corner of Ridgewood and Highlands. Um, I've dialed in tonight to offer my support for the proposed townhome development, which I think will deliver significant benefits. Considering the size of the units, I expect these townhomes will attract families and school age children and perhaps people are looking down, looking to downsize from larger homes in Edgemont, Dalbrook Canyon Heights, Pembroke Heights, or perhaps even West Vancouver. The location of this project is ideally situated for added residential density within walking distance to Thrifties, Shoppers Drug Mart, the Edgemont Walking Clinic and other daily necessities. Uh, as more and more shops and restaurants open in the village, I think the neighborhood is going to become more popular with downsizers and young families like we've seen around Lower Lonsdale. We walk, I have three children, aged seven, five and three, and we walk by this site daily to go get frozen yogurt or go to Delaney's Coffee or, you know, have something on the patio at Buffalo. You know, my larger concern is down the road, where are my kids going to be able to live when they grow up and yes, even these townhomes will likely be out of reach, but at least it's a step in the right direction to get more young families the opportunity to live in this wonderful neighborhood. And um, yeah, I thank you for the opportunity to participate tonight.
Thank you for your comments, Casey Pollard. Uh, the next speaker I have is Jack Alpress, followed by Eric Skoronek. Jack, joining us virtually. There we go. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, clearly, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Little, and hello councillors. Thank you for uh, for tonight and taking this uh, the uh, the site forward with West Group. I am calling in uh in support of the project, uh, similar to a lot of the other support that's been referenced. Not going to talk about the uh, everything that it meets within the guidelines of the application, but I want to talk more about, I think, what's the real challenge and that's families trying to find places to live and speaking on behalf of our friend group, we uh, we have two kids under three. We've been fortunate enough to move to North Vancouver. I live in Upper Lonsdale. We frequent Edgemont Village both for our grocery shopping, amenities going to the Dalbrook Community Centre and a lot of our friends that are still in condos or living in downtown Vancouver that are constrained by uh, by housing costs, wanting to move into these communities with great schools such as Edgemont Village uh have had a challenging time to do so and are kind of pigeonholed into uh in affordability. And although these are expensive from a standpoint of uh, of a first time home buyer, they are a leaping stone for a lot of people who own a condo or a townhouse in Vancouver or in areas where they're looking to, to make the move before they get a single detached home. So calling in support of that and uh, and really optimistic that the, the mayor council will see this project through and uh, and support it in every way for, for growing families and for downsizers as referenced. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your comments, Jack Alpress. Uh, next speaker I have is Eric Skoronek, joining us here in person, followed by Catherine Walker. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Is it, is uh, the mic on?
You're good.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Council, for uh letting me speak. Uh, the project as a whole, I, I think I'm quite supportive. My big concern and it's been my big concern for quite a while in Edgemont because I live right on Edgemont on Woodbine Drive, is the parking that the parking, even though it does meet with the bylaw at one point seven five, is not sufficient for the number of units. You've got a big mix of three bedroom units and likely the number of cars that are going to be there are going to end up spilling on the street because there isn't going to be enough parking. Um, we did this with um, Amica. You know, all our employees are going to be taking the bus. Well, seems all our employees are now parking up Highland during the day because there is no parking underneath. And that's the same overall. Uh, when the project that Adrian Chaster talked about on the corner of Connaught and Crescent View was first discussed, they didn't have basically two units per, or two parking spots per unit. And um, after some discussion with the community, they came around and they sort of took the easy way out to get up to the, the number because they couldn't physically or felt it wasn't possible to physically build more units. So they cut the number of units in their project. Took a couple of units out of the project and hence they got up to two parking spots. So I, I just bring that up that I think it's going to be a problem. Probably a good example is the units down by Fibs Exchange. There were a couple of those rental units soon as they were built. The whole streets were clogged with parking. There's just never enough parking and there's no harm in having extra parking. Might cost more money. The developers always whine that it costs too much money. But at the end of the day, if you don't have, put it in at the time, you never get it and you end up in basic gridlock. Uh, the other question that I would have, and I'm not sure if there's any consideration. My understanding was that with all the development going on in and around the village, the plan was to get a lot of the wiring underground. And if there's any contribution from this project towards getting wiring underground or if it's going to stay above ground. And I guess, you know, I'd like to um give them the credit for going to an all electric building. Only guy living in Edgemont over the last four or five years, just about every winter, we've had two or three days where the power's been out for extensive periods of time. And that goes back to, I think, a comment that I'd made earlier that as we move towards this more and more, we have to find a way to protect the grid so it doesn't go down. And part of that is possibly underground wiring because a lot of the outages are a function of trees falling across wires. But otherwise, on the whole, the design, the size of the uh, the um project is, is pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric Skoronek, followed by, next speaker is Catherine Walker, followed by Adrian Berucci.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. Welcome.
Great. Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor Little, uh Little and council members. Um, I appreciate uh being able to talk tonight. I'll be quick because I know I have a lot of same um points that people have already discussed. Um, my name is Catherine Walker. I've lived in the Edgemont area for the past thirty years and have had our children raised in this community and I've seen the plans for this site and I fully support it. Um, simply put, uh, we need more townhouses um for people who want to downsize, for your young families trying to move in that can't afford the single family places. Um, the cost of living is just too high for these people. Um, so I just wanted to um say, send, uh, give my support. Um, say that from what I understand, everything has been met with the village community plan. Um, it's a great proposal and it's been in the works for many, many years and I hope to see this project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Catherine Walker. Uh, next speaker is Adrian Berucci, followed by Steve Norris. Adrian, joining us virtually, virtually, there we go, okay.
Yep. Hi, everybody. Thank you. I can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
I will not need all five, but I would like to thank you for uh taking the time to hear myself and the other speakers. I am calling in to support the project. I live on New Market Drive. I've been in Edgemont for seven years. I walk my kids to Highlands Elementary and now one is walking to Hansworth. Um, I'm fully supportive of this project, uh, despite the fact that I can't stand construction in my neighborhood, but I, I do recognize that the two or three years of, of, of pain that it may bring is for the better good of the community, the village, the retailers, the uh downsizers and the first time home buyers. I think that uh, projects like this are never perfect. This one does tick off a lot of the boxes uh that make it really, really uh supportable and a really positive uh addition to the neighborhood. It is the right type of housing that both the village and the D N V need at this point in time, especially where our single family housing costs are coming in and the, some of the challenges uh young families may have with apartment living. I think that uh the plan in its entirety, both of this project and the Edgemont Village Plan has been well thought out. Its execution to date has been very, very well done. It really is one of the more special and spectacular little villages or communities, probably in Western Canada, arguably if not the best, maybe I'm just biased, but um, I don't ever want to leave this little village and, you know, I hope my kids do for a while, but always come back. And I think that housing like this will give them a better opportunity to do so. I also want to challenge uh anybody who is a naysayer to the project, um, what they feel may be better um as opposed to stagnation and no new development. I think the things that really challenge Edgemont right now are the old Bake House, which has been sitting vacant and dormant for four or five years. The vacant parking lot where the Petro Canada was, sorry, I don't know the address. I know it serves the community, the community for a little bit of surface parking, but it does enhance the village, enhance the village, doesn't enhance everybody's daily life. I think that the right projects in the right location can really do more benefit than it can do harm. And I, I agree, construction's frustrating. I don't think the traffic for thirty-two units, even if everyone has two cars and an e-bike, will make any dramatic difference to the neighborhood. I think we have to look past the negative things and look at the, the, the positive attributes that new housing brings to community. So I'm fully supportive and that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Adrian Berucci. Uh, next speaker I have is Steve Norris.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. My name is Steve Norris and I'm calling in to support the proposed Ridgewood development. Great. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Steve Norris and I'm calling in to support the proposed Ridgewood development. I'm a husband and a father of two boys and live just a few minutes from Edgemont Village. The village is a vibrant, family-friendly community and this development would go far away. In supporting both the local businesses in the area as well as offering some diverse housing options for community-oriented families looking and calling North Shore Home. I I'm all for it. I I think the presentations were great tonight. The latest designs are in compliance with the plans and and they look fantastic. Really appreciate your time tonight. Thanks for letting me chime in.
Great. Uh thank you very much, Steve Norris. Okay, so I've gone through the uh list of people who had signed up ahead of time. Uh if anybody else would like to add their name to the list at this point, uh just raise your hand in person. I've got. One, two, three, we'll start there. So if you would like to come forward to the desk. Uh and then I'll I'll take some virtual participants after that, but I've got three in-house here. Uh welcome. If you could start with your name, that would be great.
Right. My name is Henry Indrum. I live at ten thirty six Ridgewood Drive. Excuse me. I've lived there for since nineteen sixty-five. Okay, so I'm a real geezer of the area. Uh I do have several concerns as respect to the development. I do not oppose the development in principle, but I do have some concerns with respect to safety. And one of them is the uh the sidewalk. Of the area has to be given some attention. There's a lot of kids going to school at Highland School now. And the population of that area has increased and I see a lot of parents escorting their children to school, which we never used to see. Okay. One thing I would like to see happen there is. A traffic uh calm calmer put in place because traffic there. Has is the speed of traffic has increased substantially. Okay, they stop at the stop at the stoplight at Edgemont. And they go uphill right up to the to the Highland uh stop sign and they they increase past my driveway. I would guess sometimes that. Seventy eighty kilometers an hour, maybe even faster. And I think this is a real concern and that should be a concern of of the developers, everyone else, because. This has got to be something that's going to be addressed. It should be addressed. Okay. The calming bar, I think, would really be a significant uh step in calming the traffic down. And I think that should be considered. Okay. Another thing that I've seen over the last little while and I've actually contacted the engineering department a number of years ago when this same project was. Turned down and that was respect to the the number of uh wooden power poles that have been put up by. B C Hydro and the and tell us, you know, it's almost a disgrace. On Air Avenue between Ridgewood Drive and Woodcroft, it's just a small block. That's just between the Amica. Senior citizens residents, okay? There are seven hydro poles or telephone poles in place and I think three or four of them have just been put in recently. And as ethically, it is just looks terrible. This is nineteen twenty, this is nineteen or two thousand twenty-three, sorry. And I think we should be past that stage of having power poles put up like that. When they put in the project there. The shopping center, everything was put underground and it looks just beautiful. That's just what it should look like today. Okay. When they when they build Amica, they had an opportunity to go ahead and put those. Those uh lines underground because it was an open area from one end of the block to the other. And it wasn't done and the same thing happened. It's all wooden power poles. It it just looks terrible and they're going to be there for the next thirty or forty years. You can be sure of that. And that's another thing I would like to councilists to consider or the developers to consider. I I have no real objection to the uh to the development. I know it's going to go through and I won't oppose it. Okay, and I think I have a fairly good rapport with the developers of that project now. We've spoken many times. This should be very positive, any input. And I'm very happy about that. One thing is just viewing the uh the structure of the buildings. I'm not sure if the coloring of the outside of those buildings. Could be changed because there seems to be an awful lot of gray and black in there and I think. Winter time, you know, we just don't need that that kind of coloring outside. Maybe we can lighten that up a bit. I just a suggestion only. I think that's about all I've got to say, but anyway, I'd like to just thank you for your time and. I just wanted to express my opinion and I live directly, directly across the street from this development. Directly across like there's only Ridgewood Drive. I'm on the north side looking south. And this development will be facing me on the opposite side. So I'll be looking directly at this development as the progresses. Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments.
So I just like to know that. Thank you.
Okay, uh Mr. Lesso. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Uh John Lesso, thirty-five hundred Cabalano Road. I'm surprised at the uh number of people. That think this is a great project because it isn't. It's overbuilt for the site. You have thirty-two units going on a site that it's now has four homes. It's kind of ironic. The only affordable rental housing is the housing that's going to be raised to make way for this overdeveloped site. I've lived in a lot of different living situations for the past thirty years in the lower mainland Vancouver. This reminds me of a bit of a housing development that I lived in back in the eighties. A brand new development called Charles Square Co-op. It was financed by the uh housing and mortgage uh people. But it was advertised as a co-op for families. But if you actually live there, you realize that it's not just for families. It's subsidized rentals for people packed into six hundred square foot. Above ground living areas. Now, if you can convince me that's a good environment. To raise young families. Then you've got a lot of convincing to do because it's obviously not. You need space. You need space for these families that you're paying lip service to. It's overbuilt for the site. Just down the way, you've got twelve units. That you're going to probably be approving. Why are you approving thirty-two units just a little bit closer to Edgemont? My alternative would be make it sixteen. Make it sixteen. Then you haven't broken any rules. As you move out from town center to go to sixteen and then twelve and then. You'll still be not breaking any rules. Now, I assume that you've been walking that area. I've walked it a lot. I've driven down there today. But if you go down Ridgewood on the north, you have single family homes, church. Some of those homes are pretty nice. But on the opposite side, where you're going to be ostensibly building these beautiful family dwellings. You have. You know, boutiques, expensive uh shops, happy hour, you know. It it's a it's a contrast in what a neighborhood should be. Into what the vision into the vision that you have of what the neighborhood probably will be. Now, I first looked at this project about a year ago. They had an open house. And I was told that, you know, it got turned down, but we're going to present it again. We get a more development-friendly council after the election. Are you that development-friendly council? Are you? I hope not, because what you're approving here is a very intense development. It's not going to serve any great purpose for families. There is no affordable housing. There is no affordable housing. I was told at the open house there was a traffic study done, really. A traffic study for a a development that hasn't even been built yet. You know, if you if you walk the site and envision what's there and what could be there if you build to this intensity. You would appreciate the fact that you are going to need a traffic study. Because it's going to be overbuilt and you're going to have danger to you who are walking on the sidewalks. It's not a good development. It's not a good development. I sent you some photographs. I've sent some to uh staff. To show what the uh effects are of overbuilding and I'll continue to do that. Probably because you're going to approve it and just so I can say, I told you so. Don't approve this development with this density. Have it have it from thirty-two to sixteen, tapering down to twelve in the development. On further down on Ridgewood and you haven't broken any rules. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, John Lesso. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing. If you could start with your name, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name is Penny Jacobson. I'm a neighbor of Henry's and we both live on the. North side of Ridgewood Drive, so I'm very familiar with the construction in the area of Knott Building and um the development down further on Ridgewood Drive. I originally thought that the traffic was going to be really bad. Um and I'm pleased to say that I haven't found that to be the case. Um. It hasn't um. I don't think the Knott has actually changed the traffic problem problem in in our area. Um. I barely ever get in my car. I I walk to the village all the time. So what I do notice. Though is that people who do not live in the area, they definitely drive up Ridgewood at excessive speeds. So I used to live further down Ridgewood um towards Capelana Road and you definitely see this pattern of. As people go up the hill, they accelerate. I guess they feel like they've got to get up this big hill, so they they're really laying it down and they they hit the the um. The traffic light and they stop. They come past um. Cannot up to where the air um intersection is and, you know, they may or may not not stop for pedestrians at that corner. And then as they get through that, they accelerate up to Highlands Boulevard. So I would be. Also in support of some kind of calming of that traffic along there, whether it's reducing the speed and and heavily monitoring that until people are actually. I I do see that it has been calmed in the village, which has made a huge difference. So um we we have to cross Ridgewood Drive. There's no crosswalk to get across Ridgewood Drive. So we stand there sometimes and people just just drive like crazy. So. I think with more pedestrian traffic that this is going to have this this these units. Um I I would see that that would be a concern for people to be walking along a street that has very, very heavily used um traffic that are going at excessive speeds. Because they're going up Highlands. That's where they're going. They're going to the traffic and then they're going to go up Highlands. So um. I am fully in support of this project. I think the beautiful, the buildings are beautiful. I love that they're passive. Um I am a hundred percent in support of more density there. I think it's um I I think it is definitely needed. I. I know it isn't going to um be accessible for all many people, but it's going to be accessible for people who can't afford the single family dwelling. So I think it is fitting, it's fitting as a portion of the um the need and not all of the need, but um. I um I do hope you approve this. I think it's a great project and I I love the look of the passive building. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh just going to our virtual participants, I believe I've got Corey Cost uh up next. Followed by um Arya Jarabi. Corey Cost, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, your worship. Can you hear me?
Welcome. Yes, I can hear you clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Uh good evening, your worship and members of council. Uh my name is Corey Cost. I've lived almost fifty years on Coldwood Drive. That's on the uh lower side away from the school um on Coldwood. I've been very active in the community and I've always tried to give council useful information. Um and I hope what I'm about to give you uh is useful to make and possibly improve the outcome. First problem I had and doing some more research on this project is that it seems like GeoWeb Link is no longer on the District of North Vancouver's webpage. And it used to be very prominent unless you noted the name GeoWeb as a keyword to list on the search, you will not find it. Uh I don't know why this was removed. It's a showpiece, a piece of hardware. It's valuable in order to uh look at the existing land uses, zoning, property sizes and assessments, so on. I would like to share the screen so maybe people can follow my presentation. A little better. Your worship, can you see this?
Uh yes, I can. Uh if you can make it full screen, that might assist us, but I can see it.
Okay, I will view it as a full screen. Okay.
There you go.
Let's start at the beginning. So um it appears. That the previous proposal, now December twenty seventeen, which came earlier in the year to our association. Has been removed from the district website. It contains a number of valuable pieces of information, not the least of which is that. Uh the potential unit sizes were eighteen seventy-eight to twenty-three hundred and twenty square feet. Much larger than what's being proposed now. Yes, the number of units were lower. And because I I guess the thought was that uh families need needed the space. At that time, there were fifty-two parking spaces. And now it's sixty-four. I also note that the uh on page four four four, that the advisory design panel. Have looked and I appreciate that that uh the report on the advisory. Design panels was included in this, which is rarely done, in my opinion. And presented the changes and the changes were highlighted and since the uh previous proposal was brought before them as well. And they highlighted the difference. Peculiarly enough, they had access to the previous. Uh proposal, while our public does not have access to it. I don't know why the public shouldn't have access to the proposal. I think it has some merits as well and some changes. And we want to see the rationale for those changes. Using the estimated two people per unit and a parkland requirement of eight acres per thousand people. I calculate the need to provide about a half acre of new parkland. The C A C was seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and even if used all of it. That would be woefully inadequate to purchase such a quantity of parkland. So again, what is continuing here is the cannibalization of our existing parkland. In other words, this new development is not paying its way. I can't help but comment on that. It's nothing to do with the development itself. It's all to do with how council. Uh thinks about its priorities. Note that on page three of the staff report, page five of this package. That the twenty-eleven official community plan O C P designated for this site was residential level two. Which envisaged that. Which envisaged that detached housing at a density of up to approximately point five-five floor space ratio. And this designation was placed on the property as a reflection of the existing use. Which is gibberish to me and I understand what FSRs are all about. But there's it, it fails to note that the current residential zoning for these four properties is approximately up to point three-five FSR. Now throughout this whole four, four to five hundred page document. It's just, it discusses the FSR. Some pages I believe are obsolete. It shouldn't be there, should be crossed out. Which was one of the issues, I think Mayor pointed out recently by our mayor. That when the page is obsolete, it should be clearly indicated that it is. So people don't consider and get confused about all these different FSRs or badgered about in the doc.
So Dr. Cost, your time has elapsed. If you're drawing to a close, we can do that. Otherwise, I'm happy to put you at the top of the list for second time speakers.
Please, yes, do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have a virtual participant Arya Jarabi next. But I need you to accept the clerk's promotion to a panel, which should be popping up on your screen. Which side? Great. And we need to clear Dr. Cost. There we go. Dr. Cost slides. There we go.
Hello, your worship. Could you hear? Yes, that's good.
I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. My name is Arya Jarabi and I'm resident of Knott Crescent Building. I am here that I wanted to say that I am opposed to the new construction. And the reason that I'm opposed is increased population. The proposed building will result in more population of people coming in here. That's one of the reasons. And I think that changes the family friendly environment that currently is here. It will reduce it. And I'm also concerned about crime and safety that more pop, a larger population could introduce a new set of safety concern. And maybe the that because in my building, there is all, there were some instances of trying to come to our parking, some people and so once there is more population here, I'm, I think especially because more young people will come here. That may be a risk. But my most concern is that this building is just a view of my home. So I can see it from my window. The it's, it's directly and I, it can, has effect on privacy during the construction. Because people can see inside my home more easily and they are more, they can look better and I'm also very concerned about the noise that during the construction happens because it's, it's very close to my building and it can, it may also blocks, it's also blocks some side light in front of my building. And so, and I wasn't able to find any information about how this project, does this project cost the District of North Vancouver money? So do they have to provide subsidies for it? I, I wasn't able to see that. So I wish that the council delays or review the project more. So it can be a little bit less changed, but the project considering among it's, it's the most efficient way to use the current zone. One of the reasons that my family came to Edgemont Village was because before then we lived at Lonsdale. Near the city of North Vancouver Library. And it was very crowded and it caused a lot of noise and I, one of the main reason was because here is a very less populated and there is lots of single home houses. So that's the main reason that we also came here. So that affect my family personally a a lot. So I wish the council opposed the project. And thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Arya Jarabi, for your comments. Uh, I have a virtual attendee named Ian with their virtual hand up. Uh, we're going to have you move over as a panelist.
Hi, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. Welcome. I'm going to get you to speak in a nice loud voice. It was coming in a little bit soft. But welcome. When you're comfortable, you have five minutes to address the hearing.
Hi there. So my name's Louise McAlpine. I also live on Ridgewood Drive. I'm not quite opposite the proposed development, but very close to it. Um, I have a number of concerns. I think fundamentally, we're not opposed to the development. However, I think the development as it stands could do with some changes. And we're concerned about the density. The original proposal had twenty-five units. And many people complained about the density. This new one has thirty-two units. Um, I know that they have to provide some green space for the people living there. Looking at the plans, it looks like a tiny little green kind of area, which I'm, would be very surprised if any children are able to play on that green area. And this is proposed as a family development. And the houses do seem to be very much on top of each other because there are so many of them. Um, speaking of families, um, the school Highlands Elementary is already running with two portables. And they currently don't have enough space for the children that are going there. Um, whether this will then cause an additional problem, I don't know, depending on how many families actually move in. Given the price of the units, um, I think affordable is, is not exactly what you would describe it as. Um, there's certainly no rental units within there, which a lot of developments these days do ask for some rental units. Um, we're also a little concerned about the balconies. The the bylaw doesn't allow for balconies and patios, et cetera. These have roof decks. They have balconies. They're very much overlooking the north side of Ridgewood. Um, and then parking definitely, I think two minimum. Most people these days have, have two cars. Um, anyone who visits is going to be parking along Ridgewood. They're going to be parking in the village. I think this additional kind of fifty-six units, sorry, fifty-six parking spaces for thirty-two units isn't two spaces each. And maybe the eight visiting parking is really not going to be sufficient. Um, so fundamentally, we are not opposed to a development there. I think that the density of this one is too high. And I think that perhaps more thought needs to be given to that. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, looking to the room, is there anyone else wishing to speak a first time? Okay. And to the virtual participants, is anyone else wishing to speak a first time? Okay, so noting the time, um, I think what we have several questions that have come in from members of council through the first portion of the hearing. And so what I'd suggest is maybe we have a leg stretch and a bio break for a few minutes. Give staff an opportunity to compile those clarifying questions. And then when we return from a slight recess, we'll get the benefit of their responses to those questions and then we'll return for first and second time speakers at that point. So I'll call for a five minute recess at this point. We'll resume at eight forty-six. All right. If I can have everybody return to their seats. Uh, councillor Murray, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to get you to come back. I told everybody we'd be back at eight forty-six, eight forty-eight. If council members that are joining us virtually, if you could turn on your cameras, just so we can confirm your participation, that'd be great. So I'm going to check in with staff now, Paul and Yan Zhang. If you want to direct the questions or Emile's got it, then I, either or, but it'd be great if you could read out the question and then give your response, please.
Yes, I can speak to that through your worship. Uh, thank you for the questions. We received about thirteen questions from council and I'll go through them in approximately the order that they were received. Some of them were on a similar topic, so being grouped together. So the first question was, how big are the two and three bedroom units by square footage? So the answer to that question is the four enhanced accessible two bedroom, one story units are about nine hundred to nine hundred and thirty square feet. The other eight two bedroom, two story units are about eleven hundred to eleven seventy-five square feet. And the three bedroom units are about fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred square feet. The second question was, did the developer in the spring of twenty twenty-two take their concept to the community at a public meeting for input? And did the design change at all based on that input? Um, I can provide an initial response to that. Um, so yes, the developer, uh, West Group did hold a virtual public information meeting in the spring of twenty twenty-two. Where they presented the design and input was received from the project regarding various aspects of the project. Some design adjustments were made in particular to building three to ensure the roof deck access steps back both from Ridgewood Drive and within the site internally to reduce impacts. And other design changes were made to improve the interface for the public realm. And I'm not sure if the applicant has anything to add or has that covered. Okay, thank you. Um, the third question was, do the roof decks look out on other units within the development or other properties outside of the development site? So as I noted, there were some changes made to step back the roof deck. Principally from the courtyard. But my understanding is that it's, it's, there's also a planter on the Ridgewood side, which would set back the usable area of the roof deck as well from that frontage. Limiting overlook. The next question is are any of the units designed with lock off units? And the answer is no. The next question, is there a backup heat source if the temperature goes below the level that the heat pumps can handle? And I will turn that over to the applicant team to respond to. You can come up to the microphone.
Thank you. To the chair, just wanted to respond to that question. So just to kind of give an explanation of the heat pump system. So basically it's a hundred percent electric system. And the heat pump system is a energy source, no different than a typical furnace. And so in terms of having a backup source of energy, it functions in a similar way that a gas furnace would function just instead of electric, instead of it's electric. And the way the heat pump works actually is it takes the cool air from the exterior and obviously transitions it and changes it over to minimize heat loss. And, um, and use less and less energy. So typically in terms of code or in terms of normal system, there's no backup for that type of system. I think the one thing I would say is you know, the combination of a heat pump and the reason why it works really nicely with a passive house system is that the energy performance in the wall airtightness in a passive house system complements it very well. So in the case of a power outage, for example, I think the ratio is, you know, for to keep a home at around twenty to twenty-five degrees centigrade. If the power goes out, that home can stay at the temperature for ninety-six hours in a passive house. In a typical building built to step two or step three of the energy performance code, that would drop down about twelve degrees centigrade within about four to six hours. So in a power outage type scenario, the, the energy performance and keeping that energy within the, within the suite is quite substantial. So there's not going to be that many scenarios in which a backup system would be needed as long as the, the, the building stays closed. I'm not sure if that answers the question.
Well, we've, we've had an issue with some units and multifamily developments that are new that don't have, that need backup systems because the heat pumps that we approved as part of those developments will not operate when the temperature during the winter, so temperature in the winter goes below certain. So they're now looking at putting additional heat sources in. So that's why.
I think we don't, we don't have an example of one of those that's in passive though.
No, exactly. So that's why the, there's a difference with the passive. So I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah. And I guess also just in terms of, and again, it's, it's tough because the temperature is a combination of how efficient the building is with the energy source, right? So I've been told by our passive house consultant that ultimately you know, the temperature, there is no real low temperature in which the passive house, so the heat pump system would kind of turn off. So I can go to obviously, you know, minus fifteen degrees.
We have the passive house consultant on the virtual call.
Oh, there's Josh.
I think you've mostly answered it, but yes, I can.
Did I do okay, Josh?
You did great. Yeah, no, I think, uh, to the point with the, the heat pumps are, are absolutely different kinds of heat pumps that don't operate very well below about minus fifteen. And I think to your point councillor. We are specifying the cool climate heat pumps that should operate to minus twenty-five, which is significantly below the design temperature for the District of North Vancouver. That said, uh, should we run into those conditions? We would expect that the passive house system will keep us quite warm. Additionally, I believe that the mechanical engineer will be looking at, you know, doing a more detailed review to see if we'd need to put in any baseboard electric heating as a, as a significant backup. This is always a fairly affordable option should the mechanical engineer team, we need to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Emil?
Thank you. Uh, yes, the next question was, is there an estimate on the Metro Vancouver and TransLink DCCs? So I did a rough calculation based on the bylaws, put those up. So for the Metro Vancouver DCCs, it looks like that's roughly ninety thousand dollars for the thirty-two units and TransLink DCCs eighty thousand dollars. The next question was, Air Avenue is regularly used by trucks entering the loading bays of the grocery store. Has this been considered in the construction traffic management plan for the project? So there is a draft construction traffic management plan that's been submitted with the application reviewed by staff, that should be revised since the earlier submission. Um, and a final approved copy will be required prior to issuance of the building permit confirming how impacts on adjacent streets will be mitigated. As staff are aware of the thrifties, delivery trucks which use air to turn around or to, I was actually there this morning witnessing that they do a quick little three point turn and pull in is pretty quick. It does hold up traffic for a minute, but we're aware of that they need the full width of the road to do that. So, um, the traffic management plan will need to ensure that any staging, um, hoarding on the site will be contained to the site or within the boulevard area and maintain, um, air for adjacent uses. Okay. Next question was two parts. Uh, first part was regarding the proposed access. Why is it where it's shown on Air versus off Ridgewood Drive? So I'll answer that part first. The proposed driveway access was reviewed by the district's engineering department. And its location on Air is located on Air Avenue, which is a lower volume road as opposed to Ridgewood Drive. It's considered the appropriate location at the south end of the strait site, which is for this to way from the intersection at Ridgewood and Air. Ridgewood is not considered a great location for the driveway. It's the higher volume road. It is the, uh, walking route to Highland Elementary. Again, as I said this morning, it's a lot of families, children walking along there. Um, so it's best not to have a driveway that's crossing entering and exiting from a busier route. In addition, uh, Ridgewood has quite a slope. So you'd have vehicles that are like nosing out of a slope driveway where people are walking across. So again, that's another reason why Air Avenue. So again, that's another reason why Air Avenue is a preferred option. We do understand, like we were just talking about, that the delivery vehicles do hold up traffic on occasion on Air. But the traffic analysis for the site indicates that there's minimal traffic to be generated from this project. It looks like thirteen vehicles in the peak AM period and sixteen in the peak PM period. So it's anticipated that the, there'll be minimal impacts between the two, with the adjacent use and the site users. Okay, the next question was, does the Capeluna Suspension Bridge still have underground spaces reserved under Canot Thrifties? Capeluna Suspension Bridge does not have reserved spaces in the Canot building. This would require the district to accept a temporary relaxation to the development covenant, which is registered on title of the property at the time of rezoning of that property, which does not permit exclusive use of public parking in the building.
They did, but that's been ended. So they, they were temporarily using the underground for it, but that has been ended now.
Without a relaxation of the covenant, that's correct.
Yeah, it's, but it's been ended.
Next question, which I'll direct to the applicant, was, will Wes Group provide any discounts to existing renters who wish to purchase one of these units?
Yeah, of course, I can answer that. So the program that one of the speakers referenced was our Wes Group Rent to Home Program. It's a program we've had in, in action for about five or six years now. And it's quite simple, so anybody who rents from us has the opportunity to accumulate a discount to purchase any one of Wes Group properties anywhere that we build, Lower Mainland, which we primarily operate. And so essentially, if you rent with us for twelve months, you get a two percent discount, twenty four months, three percent, all the way up to four years and a three, a five percent discount on any home purchase. So if your tenant with our, as our, with us for up to five years, you can get a, sorry, up to four years, you can get a five percent discount. And so a number of tenants who are within those homes will qualify, that's the question.
Thank you. And I realize I didn't answer the second part of the earlier question, sorry, so I'm just gonna go back to that. We were talking about the driveway access location, the second part was in regards to construction management and what are the options to lessen the impact of construction vehicles? So firstly, construction vehicles will not be permitted to use Coalwood Drive or Highland Elementary is located. So the routes will be secured in alternate locations along Ridgewood, Air and Highland. So avoiding, avoiding that school zone. Construction staging and the offsite office location must also not conflict with access to the Canot Underground Parking and Loading, as we spoke about earlier. And a sidewalk or dedicated pedestrian pass, path must always, always be available along Ridgewood Drive for schoolchildren to get, get to school safely. Okay, next question was, has Wes Group been successful in relocation of existing tenants? So just an initial comment is that the, the, as there's four existing units in this project, the tenant relocation policy does not apply here. However, they are voluntarily providing additional notice to tenants to, to give them additional time to relocate. So six months versus the four months required by the Residential Tenant, Tenancy Act. I hope that answers that question. Okay, next question is, can staff comment on the potential to bury some electrical lines in conjunction with this project? So this project is providing significant offsite upgrades, including substantial sanitary main updates, storm and water upgrades, electrical upgrades, including undergrounding existing lines are another portion of the offsite works. And the project consultant is working through the final design of that with staff, which will also require input and approval from B C Hydro. Next question was, can staff report back as to when the report on the Edgemont Village area traffic study and thirty kilometer pilot project will be returned to council? So yes, there was a pilot project for a one year thirty kilometer zone approved by council in January, and that was implemented in May. So that'll run for one year until May twenty twenty four. And during that time, staff will be analyzing that and reporting back to council on lessons learned, and whether it might make sense to implement that full term. Yes, I can look into that and get back to you shortly. And that was all the questions. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one more that came in, I think.
There's a couple of new ones that have come in, but I did just wanna circle back to one that was there before, I don't know that I got an answer on it. It says sixty four in total, but eight are designated for visitors, so four of the units will only have one parking stall, please confirm. So they're, just, you're confirming, I guess, that they are unbundled to some degree, every unit will come with one and people can purchase the extra ones, or is that the model?
Well, I think the parking ratio is one point seven five for everything other than visitor parking. Looking at where the marketplace kind of values parking, you know, we take a look probably at what is, what is going to be the most applicable for parking for three bedroom homes and two bedroom homes and apply a one per parking ratio for every single home. And that from that additional point, you know, work with the purchasers to determine whether or not we sell the additional units and start with three bedrooms and two bedrooms. But I think you correctly note that we would likely look at the smaller homes getting one stall and then the larger homes getting more, because they're probably gonna be looking at different dynamics and family makeup of those types of homes with the smaller nine hundred square foot two bedrooms, perhaps having a better chance of, of having somebody who would have one vehicle.
Thank you very much. And then the two newer questions, are you prepared to respond to those now, or would you like some time?
Yep, we can respond to them now.
Okay.
Thank you. So the next question I will put to the applicant was, since these are strata units, would the applicant consider redesigning some units with lock off units or lock off suites?
Yeah, it's a good question. We actually did very closely look at an option to look at some of the accessible units as lock off suites. And we traded back and forth layouts that worked with access to daylight and worked in terms of what the total size of the unit would be. And what I mean by that is, you know, the, the units that make the most sense to be lock up units are the units directly underneath the northeast section of the, of the project, which is the one that has the four accessible units. And so it really came down to a bit of a trade off between lock off suites and growing the suite size, sorry, the, the unit size up over, say, two thousand square feet. And, and then trading that off with providing four accessible homes, which obviously is a very inclusive and, you know, in, in need amenity for the community. And so we were concerned about the total size of the home being something that perhaps somebody would have an issue financing and having an issue with the price point on. And we made the decision to go with the law, the accessible homes over the lockout homes, because they just, the depth of the units, it just wasn't working very well. And so, you know, in terms of what we're, we're able to do, at this point, I don't think we can commit to saying a hundred percent, you know, we can look at, we can do that because it has knock on effects, like can we look at it? Yeah, definitely. But I think there's a lot of other considerations that we've, we've talked about and we're happy to chat through that in the future. But at this point, I think we want to proceed with what's there because of the trade offs we've evaluated. And that's a little bit of the rationale behind where we, where we landed.
Thank you. No?
Thank you. Yes, and one final question we received was, can we work, work with the Canot management to discuss this construction management plan and the access to the thrifty site? So yeah, as I mentioned, staff is aware of, of the need to mitigate conflicts with that adjacent use and site. And my understanding is that the Wes Group team has been in contact with Canot. We'll continue to engage with them and work through these issues, ensure we have a solid construction traffic management plan to address this before it's finalized prior to issuance of the building permit.
We, can we, if this application is successful to zoning, is my mic on? Oh, I'm not talking into it. I'm looking, I'm so, it was a bit of a, I'm very tired, sorry. Oh, boy. Can we make sure that those discussions with Canot on that management plan happen prior, if this rezoning is successful, prior to that building permit coming forward, so we know exactly what's gonna happen and there's no surprises? We have some work to do in regards to plowing and pushing snow down that.
We can do that.
We need to make sure this is dialed up before, you know, if this, if this project is successful to, to address those issues, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, returning back to the public for public input, I do have a first time speaker joining us through the phone system. And I don't have a name attached. Can we move over the phone number ending in eight five zero? If you, if you press star six, you should be able to unmute yourself, that's for the caller that's phone number ends in eight five zero. Welcome, can you, hi, we can hear you clearly, welcome, you have five minutes to address the hearing. If you could start with your name, that'd be appreciated.
Sure, thank you. And actually, I'm the second time speaker, this is Judith Brooke, I spoke earlier as well. I will be very, very brief, can I still continue?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I just wanted to speak up here in support of the use of heat pumps. I heard Counselor Mary's concern about backup for heat pumps. And I heard the consultant's explanation on that, which obviously was, was very useful for, for that topic. But my comment here is, I have a heat pump in my home in Lynn Valley. I have been through one complete winter already with my cold climate heat pump. And as the consultant said, there, there is no need for a backup heating source for a electric heat pump, similar to the way there is no backup heat source for a gas furnace. Some folks think that if the power goes out, that a potentially a heat pump is at a disadvantage. But what folks sometimes don't realize is that your gas furnace does not work during a power outage. It also requires electricity. So I just want to stress that a cold climate heat pump is perfectly adequate here in our climate, mine is good until minus twenty five Celsius. And so I'm just putting a plug out there for the use of e, electric heat pumps. And also, as the consultant said, this project is a passive build and the need for heat is very minimal. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you, Judith Brooke. I also had a second time speaker, Corey Cost, just checking back in. Dr. Cost, did you want to speak a second time? We'll need to move Dr. Cost over.
I hope you can hear me, your worship.
Yes, I can clearly and see you, welcome, you have five additional minutes for the hearing.
Let's get this back on the windows here. On screen mode, so I think this is where we left off. There's a bit of a conflict there about the tree retention program. I think if you read the Burley Boys Tree Service on page four five five, there's no chance that you'll be able to retain any of the trees, it'll have to be a full replant. So all the big trees will go. And so I'll continue to note some tidbits that might be useful, three stories up to forty four feet high seems excessive to me. And of course, the invasion privacy between the various units that are there and the surrounding area. That is going to be a concern, I think, for council. If you're fully electric, so you're gonna not have any emergency heating and cooling. Especially, there'll be a problem during extreme weather events, be it either very hot or very cold. Yes, ninety six hours apparently is what you can rely on with no fresh air. But that's not very good for you. And I've had a carbon dioxide, I'm not talking about carbon monoxide. I've had a carbon dioxide unit which I purchased in the home some time ago. And if you try to seal up the home too much, your carbon dioxide levels will drop. So having a fully sealed home, much better sealed than ours, your carbon dioxide levels will rise to dangerous levels. And I just emailed you a study, okay, on that effect, so mayor and council can read it. You will have to open the windows, but of course, that either lets the heat or the cold in. So unlike my gas fireplaces, which I have two of, which continue to work without electricity, incidentally, you can continue to keep nice and warm during the cold winters when you have a long power failure, and that's how we kept warm. So there are weaknesses to these electric systems that make you rely on them and them alone. Usually, you should have a gas backup system in place, but that's not feasible for this development. So we'll continue on to the next. There is a whole bunch of action plans and the priority actions listed on this page. And whether they are used as something noteworthy for this development, there is number one, five and six. I urge counsel to read the rest of them, because they are two, some of them are quite relevant, but they were completely ignored. So what you're seeing here is cherry picking going on. And that's not a, a fair thing, I think, for proper disclosure of information. The building three, the lower courtyard units showed on page thirty five, although desirable because they're on a single level, don't have any views onto the street or the outside world. It's rather bleak situation in that the residents can only look on this interior courtyard, which dominantly has little or no sunshine, if you look at the shadowing as well. This courtyard is mostly in shadows year round. That's the only place where you can view for these particular units, not very desirable. The package material seems very repetitive, as I probably noted before. This may be used in material which has no longer applicable to the current application. If there's such material, I urge you, as Mayor Little has recently suggested, that such the pages be clearly watermarked with a large X. And that will make it much easier to read the four to five hundred pages of material that you have to go through. I had hoped, in line with our O C P and recent District of North Vancouver publications on housing needs, that these units would be rental, or at least more affordable by working with the province and the federal government. Being another tidbit of the previous case, the rooftop patios were to be removed because of complaints of over viewing, and I think that is all part of the package of the twenty seventeen presentation. As were the seven units with private elevators that were urged and came forward that time. I have no idea if they are still in there. I would like an answer to that, but I'll read the final thing that I finally, I find that the external colors and somebody else coincidentally mentioned, really looks bleak and out of character with the eclectic look of the rest of the village. I guess in somewhere, somebody said that beauty is in the eye of the holder. But those units don't look very nice on the street level at all outside. So that, I think, completes what I have. And I might come back a third time if there's other issues that I've forgotten, thank you.
Thank you, Corey Cost. Would anybody else like to address the hearing a first or second time? Thank you, Corey Cost. Would anybody else like to address the hearing a first or second time? Okay, looking to the virtual attendees as well, anybody first or second time? Check back in with the staff. Have you received any additional questions from the council at this time?
Hey, your worship, sorry, your worship, I just wanted to, there's no additional question, but I just want to look back. To councillor Mary's question about that broader traffic study even around the village, Edgemont Village. And I do believe that staff from transportation planning has responded that they have current data. But they're going to need to collect additional data, and this probably will be tying in with the thirty-kilometer zone report back. Because it's going to see how the traffic impacts of that pilot study, as well as all the development happening in the area. Is actually having on the local transportation network. So I just want to respond to that.
Do you, would you like to restate a question in there? What question would you like to restate?
I don't know if they were written down. I'm just wondering if that's why he'll. Come back for a third time with those questions.
Okay, so I'll put it back out to the room. Would anybody else like to speak to the hearing a first, second or third time? Okay, I have no speakers at this time, so.
Could could staff? Just, did you hear Mr. Cost's questions in regards to the elevator? Did you hear that question?
I think I heard a mention of that there were previous, there were units in the previous application, not this one that included elevators. I don't recall. I would have to look up in that file, but this project's never included direct elevator access.
Okay, thank you.
Enhanced units are one-floor units access at grade. Okay, all right, so at at this point, it's going to sound a little bit archaic, but we have to exhaust the speaker's list. And there's a bit of a process. I think that's for, just to be clear, councillor Beck, you have a a motion at the time we've completed the conclusion, the the hearing, is that correct?
Yes, your worship.
Okay, thank you very much. And so I'm going to ask three times, I'm going to do this, but the first time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? A second time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? And a third and final time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk. I believe we have exhausted the public speaker's list at this time. Thank you. And I'm going to look to council, councillor Beck. I believe you have a motion that you'd like to make.
Yes, I'd like to move that this public hearing be closed and that the matter be returned to a regular meeting of council.
Seconded by councillor Hanson, prepared to call the question on that motion. All those in favor, contrary-minded, motion carries. Turn to the clerk. When would this item be likely returned for second and third reading?
Thank you, your worship. It is tentatively scheduled for December fourth.
Okay, so our intent is to have it for the December fourth meeting. But unfortunately, urgent emergent issues may come up that may adjust that. And so we'd encourage you to look to the agendas in the week before. To see whether that item is going to be coming up, but our intent at this point is December fourth for second and third reading. This matter is now closed. And so what that means is that the council can't receive new submissions on this, on these items. If members of the public have additional questions about it, you can contact the staff to to get clarification. But the council itself cannot receive any additional information until they bring the matter back and actually complete conclude the matter. And so at this point, this is closed. I did, as we wrap up the evening, I did want to thank staff for their preparation, the reports for our consideration tonight. Thank members of public for coming out and sharing their opinions. And thank you to council. Look forward to hearing your deliberations when this matter returns. At this point, I'll accept adjournment. Accepted. Thank you very much. Everybody have a fine, fantastic evening. Good night.